Thank you for your patience, we are waiting on quorum. We are waiting till 6:15.
Muted.
We are now live. This meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Due to the ongoing threat to public health, the City of Socorro, Texas Council and Commission will be conducting a virtual meeting broadcasted by phone and live streaming services from council chambers located at 860 North Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas 79927 to practice social distancing and limit the number of people physically present at one time. There will be no physical access to a location mentioned above. We do ask everyone to silence their electronics to avoid any sound interruptions. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to call disconnection and possible prosecution. Anyone who has signed up to speak or present will be called upon by that presiding officer to speak during public comment or on their specific agenda item in accordance with Government Code 551.042.
La reunión del Consilio de la Ciudad de Socorro está por empezar. Por el problema de salud pública en curso, el Consilio y las Comisiones de la Ciudad de Socorro, Texas transmitirán su reunión por teléfono y servicios de transmisión en vivo desde la sala del Consilio localizada en 860 North Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas 79927 para practicar el distanciamiento social y limitar el número de personas físicamente presentes. No habrá acceso físico a la ubicación mencionada anteriormente. Les pedimos a todos que silencien su equipo electrónico para evitar interrupciones de sonido. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. Quien no siga estas reglas se llamará desconectada y puede ser infraccionado. A quien se haya apuntado para hablar o presentar será anunciado por lo oficial condicionando la reunión para hablar durante los comentarios públicos o sobre su tema específico de la agenda, de acuerdo con el Código del Gobierno 551.042.
It is now 6:17 PM, this meeting is called to order. Item number two, Ms. Rolarte, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent, Relf Duran.
You are muted, Ms. Ruben.
Yes, I'm here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Victor Pérez is absent, and Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes, here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, public comments. Mayor, we have one speaker, Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz.
Hi, thank you Ms. Nevado. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank every one staff of the council for all the work that you guys do. I did wanna, I guess, admit a complaint, and I want to do it publicly because a lot of people are usually waiting for these meetings, you know, to start. And, you know, for the past three months, I believe there's only one meeting that actually has started on time. And I understand that quorum has to be met, but the charter says that mayor and three voting members is quorum, and so I looked through, excuse me, I looked through some of the meetings and there were times where the meeting was postponed until 6:15 even though there was already three voting members present, at least from what I could tell from the screen. And so I'm not really sure why it's becoming customary to postpone these meetings until 6:15 to start. Like I said, it seems like now it's a habitual thing. If council would like to have these meetings start maybe at 6:15, then maybe that's something that you would, that you should do, so that people aren't already waiting, you know, the time that they wait to sign up to speak and then the public isn't waiting another 15 minutes and then, of course, these meetings are, you know, they do take some time. And so I guess I would just ask for city council to take people's time into consideration. I don't know if we've gotten a little bit of lax because, you know, you're no longer walking into a room of people waiting on you, but I really hope that we can just start getting, you know, started on time, like before. It never used to be, at least it didn't seem that it used to be this much of an issue before this year. Thank you.
Mayor, those were our speakers. Thank you. Presentations, item number five, workshop and discussion in action on fiscal year 2021 through 2022 budget for all the City of Socorro departments, including revenue projections for fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
Good evening, Marion Council. We do have Mr. Charles Cacianno that will be talking about our debt, and this is a very preliminary worksheet on the tax revenue, and we're working with estimated numbers. Mr. Charlie, I will go ahead and share the screen.
All right, thank you. Well, if he could make that bigger, that'd be awesome. You know, down in the right corner, yeah, if you hit the plus sign.
There you go.
Okay, if you could scroll it all the way to the top. Okay. This schedule is basically our starting point usually for every year's budget for the, for the general fund and for the debt service fund. And what it is, is a, is just an estimate of, well, an estimate of the funds that we will need to raise through property taxes to cover our debt service, that is the principal and interest. If we could scroll down just a little bit. If you stop right there, it says debt service by certificates of obligation. Those are the only kinds of outstanding debt that we have right now. And by, by bond issuance, that's how the principal and interest come out. And for the year, for the next fiscal year, and that's fiscal year 2022, we will be paying out $2,097 and change of debt service out of the revenues that are predicted to come out of the, out of the property taxes. And that's where we start because they have priority to the, to the property tax revenues. So if we could go to the next one, yeah, that, but that one, the tax rate analysis. Okay, and if you could make that just a little bit bigger, and the, the numbers on the right are unnecessary, that's, that's just me playing around with the big numbers. So, okay, all right. So what I'd like to do first of all, though, is kind of backtrack, go back in time to Senate Bill Number Two, which was passed in 2019. And in 2019, what they did is they, they took, they did two things to us. They took something called the effective tax rate and changed it into something called the no new revenue tax rate. Now, I'm gonna try to explain it, but it, it can be a little bit confusing. But the effective tax rate was something that was needed to raise the same amount of maintenance and operations taxes as the previous year after taking into account changes in appraised value. So let's talk about appraised value. What we're using right now as the assessed valuation, and if you look at that spreadsheet, the assessed valuation is kind of in the middle there, and it's at $1,175 million. And it's a, it's a very round number on purpose because it's an estimate. Now, we received back in April from the Central Appraisal District, a preliminary appraisal. Now, keep in mind that they actually did reappraisals again this year, and we do have quite a bit of development in and around Socorro. And so the appraised values, again, on a preliminary basis, came in at 1.324. It was 1.347 million, I was at $1,347 million and, and change. So what I'm showing you here is a much lower number, and a part of it is to be conservative, but the other part is that when there's a reappraisal like they did for this year, there's gonna be a lot of protests, and so that number whittles down throughout the year. So we're not, we'll probably, might be a little bit more than that, but not a lot more. But it's still a pretty healthy growth number. And so since we're using that number to begin with as, as our assessed valuation, what we have to come up with is a number, again, that, that would be, used to be called the effective tax rate, and we could call it, and what we're gonna call it now, is the no new revenue tax rate. And basically what they're saying is, we want you to calculate your tax based on the new assessment so that you can just generate what you needed to generate as a, as if it were last year. And what that does sometimes is it, it restricts what you can, what you can increase the tax rate by. Before Senate Bill Two, we had something called the rollback rate. And the rollback rate was essentially an 8% increase over the prior year, over the prior year effective tax rate, and then you could, you can increase it up to that point. And what could happen is, if it was over that 8%, the, the population could, could actually petition that it go to a vote, and then that tax rate would have to be voted on. Now, what has changed, and this is significant, is that the no new revenue tax rate, you can only increase it by 3.5%. And if you do increase it over 3.5%, the election is automatic. We have to take it to the, to the voters. And so that's kind of where, where the, that's kind of the environment that we're in as we look at these, these tax rates. So it says in the, under the 2022 part that is, that has a highlight, that's a kind of a breakdown as if we were gonna use our assessed valuation with absolutely no change. If we kept the, the tax rate the same, you know, what would that give us? And if we look at the tax revenue combined, it gives us 9.8 million if we could keep it the same. If we were to drop it down to, a little bit to .83, it would then generate 9.7 million. And my guesstimate is that they're gonna, to keep it from, from going over the voter approval rate, we're gonna be looking at about .803502, and that would generate about 9.4 million. And if we, if we were to invoke again the disaster declaration, then we can go up to 8%. And if we were to do that, then we could generate probably 9.6 million. So, you know, those are the things that we're looking at right now. Again, we're in the preliminary phases. We should be getting, on July 25th, we should be getting a, an assessment that is kind of the, the final one that we can use to come up with our numbers. Again, even though those are final, the protests can happen, and so we discount it a little bit so that when we come in with a, with the assessed valuation... so that, uh, when we come in with a, with the assessed valuation, we don't, we don't overestimate, you know, for the, uh, for, uh, for the revenue. Now, again, if you would just look at the tax revenue, we have three items that say tax revenue. Tax revenue says M and O, that's for maintenance and operations. And that's what the property taxes is, is, uh, used for, is for maintenance and operations. And, uh, it says INS, which stand, it's an old, uh, phrase that says interest and sinking, but that is what the, uh, the principal and interest, uh, being paid for the, uh, for the next fiscal year. Uh, if we, if we break that down, then the difference between the combined and the, and the, um, in, interest and sinking gives us what's left over, and that's what's available. That's what's available for maintenance and operations, and that's what goes into the general fund to, to fund. It is our biggest, uh, revenue source. Now, without, um, revealing too much, we're looking, you know, we're looking pretty close to a, a twelve million dollar budget. You know, last year it was, you know, eleven million and change. And, and so one of, probably the next highest, um, uh, tax source for us is, is sales tax. And for most municipalities of our size, um, the sales tax has been an issue. Uh, for us, the, uh, the population has decided, uh, to buy locally, and so our sales tax has actually increased. And, and so that's going to, that's going to help with our, um, you know, if we, we end up needing to, to pull from the reserves, uh, we're going to be able to pull less from the reserves because we're going to have some, some nice increases from the, from the sales tax. And, and at this point, we, you know, we're kind of, uh, that's kind of where we're at. We're, you know, we're in, uh, negotiations with each department. Uh, we have most of that information, but not all of it, uh, put into our, our little spreadsheet. And what we're hoping to do is come the next, uh, at the next workshop, kind of, uh, flesh it out some more so that you can see where we're, where we're going to be allocating the, the revenues and how that all works out. But, uh, you know, we wanted to, to bring this up right now so that we can let you know kind of what, what we're looking at in, in terms of, uh, of the property taxes. Uh, and, and I know a couple of you are, are new to, to some of this lingo and just kind of get you, get your feet wet, um, with the no new revenue rates, the effective rates, and all, what all that kind of stuff means. So do you have any questions at this point? Okay, well, you know, at, then, um, I'll, I'll send it back to you, uh, Ms. Redarte.
Mayor, may I be heard? It's Jim Martinez.
Yes, Mr. Martinez?
Y- yes, ma'am. Uh, Mayor and Council, Jim Martinez, City Attorney. I just wanted to advise council, particularly for the newer members, just be aware as we go through this process, there's a, there are a series of new laws in effect. There's an entire budget law rewrite that the legislature did. I know Charlie mentioned it. I just wanted to repeat and emphasize. It, it is actually two years old. The little legislature did it in twenty nineteen, but this is the first year that it's in effect. So this is the first time your, your administration has gone through this, the first time I've gone through this, and we're not alone. This is happening all over the state. Every municipality around the state is having, you know, the, the pain of going through this for the first time, trying to figure out, okay, what are these new terms? What's this no new revenue rate? And so all I'm, all I'm saying is be conscious. It, it's a one-off. There is a learning curve and be patient with us as we go through it.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Ms. Duran?
I'd like to make a motion to approve except on item number seven. There is a mistake on our, um, on our packet. On the last page of item number thirteen of that meeting, it has the, uh, Exhibit A, Election Day, Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty. And then it also, it does not, uh, it does not give the, um, the days of early voting.
On number thirteen?
Number thirteen. Ms. Duran, it has November second, twenty twenty-one for the election?
It, on the last page, Exhibit A, it says election day schedules, effective elective day, election date, Tuesday, November third of twenty twenty. Well, it comes out backwards. Okay.
On the minutes?
On the, no, the, yeah, the minutes of the last meeting, or not the, actually the minutes. Let me see. It just, that is the, item number thirteen is calling for the election, but in the packet that we were given, the election dates are wrong. It has it for, on Exhibit A.
On what, on what item, sir?
Item thirteen.
Item number seven?
Thirteen, one-three.
So number item? Okay, but item number thirteen from the minutes. So you're talking about item number seven of this agenda?
Yeah, item number seven, to approve the council minutes of June seventeenth. There's a mistake that is on the, um, the item, item number thirteen. It shows election day schedules, Tuesday, November third, which is wrong. And then it does not give the, um, the early voting days.
Are you talking about the order, Mr. Duran?
The order? No, I, I have item thirteen from that date, from the seventeenth. And the, you know, what it shows me is November third of twenty twenty.
Those are preliminary locations. We will get the final ele, uh, places for the election?
Okay, well, I just want to say, you know, what you handed out is wrong.
That, that is the election order.
Okay, make motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent, and Ivan Colom Villalobos. Ms. Villalobos?
Yes.
Moving on to our regular agenda, public hearing and ordinance, item number twelve. Public hearing of an ordinance four ninety-four, Amendment Two, to decrease expenditures by a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars, fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. It is now six thirty-nine PM. Mayor, we don't have any, uh, speakers for public comment? And there's no one on the queue. And there's nobody. Okay. We'll give some time. Public hearing is now closed at six thirty-nine PM. Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption of ordinance four ninety-four, Amendment Two, to the decrease expenditures by a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars, fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mayor, for the record, Mr. Nevades just joined the meeting at six thirty-nine.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is our second amendment for this fiscal year. We are decreasing the budget by a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and three. We have had a couple of vacancies and funding that we will not be using this year. Um, and in the information that I have here, it gives you an explanation of where we're reducing. Um, and some of them are just, uh, vacancies throughout the year. I don't know if you all have any questions on any of the departments?
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent, and Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Human Resources Department, item number fourteen, discussion in action on approving the updated job description from Economic Development Coordinator to Economic Recovery Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Um, this action is to approve the updated job description from the City of Socorro Economic Development Coordinator to Economic Recovery Coordinator. This position was discussed with the Grants Programs Manager and the City Manager, and all of the changes, please note, that are related to ensuring that the duties are focused on the recovery efforts as per the American Rescue Plan and Guidance.
Yes, and I just, uh, wanted to add, Mayor, uh, that it's just language that is being used right now and recommended, uh, to be able to spend those funds. Um, so we're just making sure that we're complying and that the job descriptions, there's no questions to it. And we're seeing it throughout, um, around, um, you know, other entities. And so we're trying to mimic as much as they, they're doing in order to make sure that we can take advantage of this, uh, funding that's going to be available to our entity.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent, and Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Planning and zoning, item number fifteen, discussion in action on the preliminary plat approval for Cinderella Flores Village, being all of the tracks four B and four C, Socorro Grant, Block twenty-seven, for a new development.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Carlos Gayunad, interim city planner. I'm going to ask staff to please, uh, pull up the PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to go through it, um, slide by slide and give you some information, and then happy to answer any questions that you may have at the end. Next slide, please. So again, uh, item number fifteen, Cinderella Flores Village subdivision plat. Next slide, please. Uh, just a little bit of, uh, information on the case. So the discussion in action on the preliminary plat approval for the, uh, Cinderella Flores Village. A little bit of background. Land is four acres. The proposed plat will, um, actually combine two tracts of land into fifteen residential lots. The plat includes, um, the fifteen lots, public pond, and additional right-of-way, and it is zone R one. Uh, the P N Z Commission on June fifteen, twenty twenty-one voted to recommend approval, and the planning and zoning department is also recommending approval with some conditions, uh, that all the pending reports be submitted prior to recording the plat. Next slide, please. Here's the location. The, um, plat is off of Sylvia Court on Socor, near Socorro Road. Next slide, please. Here is the zoning map. And again, uh, track four C and track four B will be combined into one plat for the fifteen lots and the pond. Next slide, please. Here's just, um, images of the vacant parcel of land as it currently stands. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial photograph of the subject property, again, near Socorro Road on Sylvia Court. Next slide. Here is the copy of the plat, and then the next slide will give you a little bit more detailed information on the plat. So again, fifteen lots, uh, all sown R one, single-family homes. You have the pot, the, the number one on the lower left-hand corner is the ponding area. And, uh, I believe that is the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And the applicant, uh, engineers also here with us, if you all have any questions.
Mr. Reyes?
I got a, well, actually, I got a couple of questions on, it says that install but the development, development, the pavement. What kind of pavement are they gonna, are they gonna add to the street or?
Let me re, uh, relay that information to Mr. Gomez, but I believe it's, uh, additional right-of-way, and then the plat does show five feet of sidewalk.
Okay.
Mr. Gomez, you want to just clarify that?
Yes, uh, this is Marvin Gomez with GRV, uh, we're the engineers and surveyors. Uh, yes, we're going to be, uh, installing, uh, I believe it's about ten feet of pavement, uh, with a curb and gutter. Uh, the pavement will be, uh, asphalt, um, pretty much, I'm in the standard, uh, street. Um, there's a geotech report, and, uh, and then we actually submitted the drawings of the improvements with it, but, uh, but yeah, it will be asphalt pavement with base.
Okay, so it's going to be, uh, just adding to, to the, to the street, right?
Yes, it will be, it will be, uh, a winding of the, of the roadway of Sylvia Court.
Okay, then. And then, uh, just, uh, the last question about the pounding area?
Rightway that's been dedicated to the plat. The, the, the pounding area pretty much takes care of, uh, half of the road, uh, and then the, the, the residential lots. Uh, there's a stone sewer line that is part of the improvement drawings, a couple of inlets, and inlet, I guess closer to the middle of the subdivision capturing, uh, some of that runoff from the street and the, uh, from the homes, uh, from the future homes. And then, uh, there's one in front of the pond to capture the other half, um, uh, al- along the roadway.
And that's going to be covered, right, uh, with the rock wall?
Yes, yes, and it's surrounded by a, a seaford rock wall, and then it's going to have a gate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Ms. Villalobos?
Gentlemen, um, and I, I apologize, I, uh, the drawing that I, I received, I could not see the sizes of the lots. What is the smallest lot and what is the largest lot?
Can, uh, we pull up the presentation, please?
Uh, while we pull that up, um, I just wanted to add the fifteen lots all are cloud, all, all of them are classified as R ones.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, uh, what the plat is showing is lots of about eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five square feet, and I think they are all uniform in size. Mr. Gomez, is there one, I think there may be one that is larger?
Yes, the one at the end, that's the ten thousand, rather, rather, that gives lot number, I guess it would be lot number one.
Four eighty-six on the plat?
Yeah, the, the one on the, on the top. Uh, if you go to the cross on the other end, that would be the, the large lot, I guess, as you're putting up from, on the, at the end of the road.
Thank you, gentlemen. That, that satisfies, satisfies, uh, my question.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I just clarify, motion to approve with conditions, please?
With conditions?
Yes, sir.
With the, um...
Staff recommendations?
With the conditions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Grants Department, item number sixteen, discussion and action, approve amendment number one on the agreement between the Texas Historical Commission and the City of Socorro, Texas for the Rio Vista Farm Project.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a, we're requesting your approval for amendment number one to our agreement with the Texas Historical Commission for the FY twenty twenty Texas Preservation Trust Fund Program. This grant was awarded to the city in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Rio Vista Farm Rehabilitation Project. This is a slight change in the extension, in the grant deadline. We have requested an extension and it has been approved by the Texas Historical Commission, but we are required to bring the amendment back to Council for approval.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Parks and Public Works Department, item number seventeen, discussion and action to approve Ramirez Construction for the street striping of Passmore, Bowman, Bobby, Bovi, Moon, Buford, Place, Rio Vista, and planning and zoning parking lot in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do know our Public Works Director is on the line. However, he is feeling under the weather, so he will be here if you, in case you have any questions. But we did go out and try to outsource the striping for the major arterios that have been approved through the CIP. Through the Cover Improvement Program, we did allocate fifty thousand dollars. Right now, they are quoting us twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the streets that are mentioned. We did go out for three bids. The prices ranged from sixty-two thousand to the lowest being twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Staff is recommending that we award the contract to Ramirez Construction. They have already provided striping for our Rio Vista Recreation Center parking lot, and we were satisfied with the results, and we feel that they will do an excellent job in getting the striping done for these major streets. Do you all have any questions?
Mr. Reyes?
On the information that we got, where is it, bricks? Bricks, paving and ceiling, they have a one-year warranty. Do, does Ramirez Construction offer any warranties?
Their, his quote did not provide that information, but we can definitely go out and review that. Our procurement process, though, if we do plan on spending anything over fifty thousand dollars, we have to go out for a seal bid.
Okay.
Mr. Reyes, would you like to amend your motion to, including your motion, the awarding to Ramirez Construction?
Motion to approve Ramirez Construction, the, the street striping of the streets Passmore, Ballmer, Bobby, Moon, Buford, Place, and Rio Vista.
And the planning and zoning parking lot.
And the planning and zoning parking lot.
Second.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Mayor and Council, regular agenda, item number eighteen, discussion and action to approve the artist's work on a mural in the corner of North Loop and Three Missions Business, National Self-Storage, ten, one zero five six zero, North Loop, Socorro, Texas, seven nine nine two seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead. Mr. Duran?
I, I've spoken with the owner, his name is Rick, Rich Holdridge, and he is very, very enthusiastic about this, you know, loaning the city his wall. I don't know if any of you are, have seen it. It's right across the street from the post office. It's about four hundred feet long, it's painted white, it's like a perfect canvas for our youth to be able to do a mural on, and I think everybody goes to the post office, so everybody will see it. And he's been gracious enough to, no conditions on it, just, you know, make it beautiful, and he will be in town in a couple of weeks if anybody wants to meet with him. And, you know, like I said, I've, I've, I've had conversations with him, and I think this would be a great, a great idea, not only to keep, give our youth a large, not, you know, I, everybody's seen the one on Horizon Boulevard by the railroad tracks. Everybody's seen that one, it's beautiful. Can you imagine that times four hundred feet? Just amazing, and the work that these kids do, I mean, it's, it's first class. So if anybody has any questions for him, I do have his phone number, you can talk to him, and I think we need, we need to get projects like this going.
Ruben Reyes?
I just want to add that because it is through a grant, that there's certain things that we have to, steps that we have to take where we involve our youth for the ideas of this mural. I do know that in the next couple of meetings, we will be bringing the artist with the murals of here of the foyer. I know that that's way overdue. I know Ms. Colombia Lobos will be happy to hear that. I, I think they have a great concept that they have to pitch to you all, and then they can work on something once they get the youth involved for that wall on Three Misiones.
You are absolutely right, ma'am. I am thrilled to hear that finally.
Yes, we haven't forgotten about you, ma'am.
Ruben Reyes? Mr. Reyes?
We can't hear.
Can you hear us?
No, we can't.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to have staff research water wells for park irrigation.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Mayor?
Mr. Duran? Yes?
I've had this idea for a while. I was placed on the, on a board with the Water and Boundary Commission, and we had a meeting last Thursday, and I was shocked at what I heard. Elephant Butte is at eight percent of where it needs, needs to be. The irrigation season here in El Paso is going to be over sometime in July or early August. We're going to get four irrigations, we usually get ten to twelve irrigations. We're down to four because of the condition of Elephant Butte Dam. If it goes to a certain point, which the year before last, it was twice what it is now, it was a sixteen percent. We're at eight now. If it goes below a certain point, they shut it off because of the silver minnow, something, some endangered species of substream. They can't allow that, those minnows to die. If that happens, our, our value will be decimated, our agricultural, everything will, will, you know, will end. Anybody that, that relies on irrigation water, they won't be able to plant. And that's going to be a huge, so if you look at the backup, you see how much we're spending on potable water. This is water that could be used for houses. This is drinking water that we're using on our parks. In the end, fifty-nine thousand dollars one year. Wells, right now, our water table is about twelve to fourteen feet. You dig a hole fourteen feet down, you're going to hit water. Granted, it's brackish water. It's, it's not drinkable. And I think that we need to research this further. And hopefully, if we can, if we can make this happen, I spoke with Michael Flores from the Low Valley Water District, and he is very enthusiastic about this. And he says that I believe anything over two acres, you can drill a well. So I think we need to have staff look at this and bring us back some recommendations, and we were at the forefront of everything. We had, we were the first city to mandate mask wearing. I think we need to be the first city to get into water conservation. And in-house is the first place to start. I don't want to, I lived in California when they had water restrictions. You only had so much water, and that was it. If you went over your amount, your allotted amount, the, the amount for the water went sky-high. I don't want to see that in Socorro or in El Paso area. But El Paso does require a lot of the river water that they purify. If we get past and we're in, we're not in extreme drought, but we're in an area of severe drought. Further west, couple of hundred miles, they're in a severe drought. And it, it doesn't show any, any signs of stopping. So I think we need to lead the way, like we always have, with saving water, and I think, I don't know how many gallons this represents, but if we can divert all that water to our citizens, we'll be doing the City of Socorro a big favor. Done.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to move into executive?
Do we have anything in executive?
Yes, we do.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
And it is seven oh three.